Everybody to our meeting tonight, calling this order. And tonight's invocation will be by the Reverend Didi Carson from Pastor from First Presbyterian Church. Welcome.
Good evening. Let us pray. Living and moving God, we begin our prayers by saying thank you. We thank you for your many and abundant blessings, both in our lives and across our community. We're thankful for the opportunity to gather and to do meaningful work together. We're grateful for the work you have called us to and for the capacity to fulfill that calling. And we are grateful for the many ways you sustain us, for the ways you call us together in friendship and unity. As this council goes about their work this evening, we ask for your blessing to be upon all who vote, upon all who speak, and upon all who are present. May the matters before us this evening be handled with wisdom, thoughtfulness, and kindness. May we seek to do what is best for the people of Virginia Beach, and may we always keep our eyes on the margins and upon those most vulnerable. Loving God, we long for peace and unity and justice in our community. And we ask for you to lead us. Where there is conflict, sow your peace. Where there appears to be no way, make a way. May your presence be felt and known in this time and in this place. Amen.
Amen, thank you. And Amy, we now all offer a moment of silence for those who paid the ultimate price to keep our city and our nation safe. And now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, sir, all present.
And tonight, we want to welcome Chief Hutch to the table and to our family. And Chief Hutch, take this opportunity to say hello to folks and introduce your family, maybe.
Got to figure out which button to press, so.
That's the first duty here.
Yeah, they taught me that, that was 101 this morning. So, thank you, sir, appreciate it. And I would like to take a moment and just say a couple things. First, I'd like to just say thank you to the residents of Kempsville. As Sheriff Holcomb would say, "The first district." For affording me this opportunity to serve as your council member, it is a great honor, privilege, and very humbling. I give my word to the folks of Kempsville and the rest of the city that I will work tirelessly for you, as well as the citizens and visitors of this great city that I personally have called home almost my entire life. I said many times during the campaign, and I meant this, no one's going to out Kempsville me. I'm a proud Woodstock woodchuck, so it meant a lot to me. I would also like to recognize John Napier and Teresa Gladney for wanting to represent the residents of District One as well. My hat goes off to them. I will also work equally as hard for city staff and our educators, who are our unsung heroes. Next, I would like to thank the outstanding team that made this all possible for me. There are too many, and I've learned over the years as being the fire chief, you got to be careful when you start saying names, right? Because you inevitably leave somebody out. And there are too many, but there are a few in attendance, and then I will call a couple people. But to my, to my, these, these, these folks in here, and most of them happen to be guys right now, but they're like my brothers. You got Horace Miller, who I grew up with as a child, and is my current treasurer, and we have to finalize our final financial report tonight for the election, so that's important. We have James Ramsey, my lifelong friend is in the fire department, and he was our deputy chief and retired. Steve Lozinski right beside him, we had a fantastic senior staff table for a lot of years, and it's been a lot of fun. Deputy, current deputy chief, and Sly Dog there with his hat on, Chief Vance Cooper. I appreciate him being here. And then Mike Shavak, one of my dad's oldest friends and what now one of my longest friends. So, thanks for all you did, Mike, appreciate it. So, now just to the core group that are here. First is my campaign manager, who fell today, wet my swearing in thing this morning, and so she had to hobble in tonight, I'm sorry, Sandra. Sandra Brandt, the campaign manager. My field operations director, Eric Derabeji. Everybody say Derabeji 10 times, okay? Their experience and breadth of knowledge is exceptional, and it certainly helped me. Next is Max Godano, VBFD Fire Captain and Local 2924 President. Max couldn't be here, like me, when my boys were young. He, he takes care of his, he's, I always hated to say babysit it. He, he's there for his children while his wife works her shift today. So Max couldn't be here tonight. But without his belief and backing, the campaign would never have gotten off the ground, literally. So his work, along with the firefighters and International Association of Firefighters, were instrumental in my victory. Lastly, is my wife. Anyone who was lucky enough to have a life partner, the way I do, is way ahead of the game. So Amy, I thank you, she's my rock. She also knocked on over 500 doors for me. Amy is a crisis counselor who has worked for 35 years for Beach Psych and Centerra, helping those in mental health crisis. I told my constituents, any of them that would listen to me, we're a two-for-one deal, and believe me, that's a good deal for Kempsville and the city of Virginia Beach. My two sons are servant leaders as well. Sam, who's here right now, and you can tell he's in uniform, he just came from, he's a master firefighter in the Virginia Beach Fire Department, and he's currently enrolled in paramedic school. So I'm more than proud of him. My other son, James, is a helicopter pilot for the United States Navy. He's currently deployed on special assignment to Singapore. It means a lot to me for y'all to be here. I'm a Virginia Beach firefighter at heart, though, and something we do, and Chief Cover and the rest of the guys back there will tell you that, we do after, after every major event, we do a hot wash or critique of the incident. And my team has already done that for our election that just occurred. I'm proud to have been part of a team that won 47% of the vote in a three-way race in 10 of 11 precincts. Eric said to me many times, and this is not necessarily a compliment, he had never worked with a candidate quite like me. And that he had never worked with a candidate who's worked as hard. So I appreciate you pushing me, buddy. For the upcoming election, we, we have ID'd what did, what we did well, and more importantly, where there's room for improvement. I promise we will implement these improvements, so we finish even stronger in November. Not that it should happen in council, but I know partisan politics does come into play sometimes. And this is where retired DCM and past fire chief Steve Cover has put me in many of the positions that has led me to be able to get to this position. And for that, I'm ever, I'm always grateful, Steve. And he always said, "Work for the common good of all," and I promise I'll keep doing that. Now, for those of you who have seen the play Hamilton, I'm ready to be in the room where it happens, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Hutch. Bryce Mayor Wilson has a comment.
Just to be very brief, we're all so happy to have you as part of the family, as the mayor said. And I didn't want this moment to pass without us recognizing that you are the second fire chief that we've had on this council, also who represented Kempsville. And just want to, just take a minute to remember our beloved Harry Dyzel, and who's no longer with us, but his wife Jenny is. And I'm sure she's really proud of this moment as well, to see you in this spot, in this spot, so congratulations.
Right. Okay, Chief Hutch, now it's time for your first vote. Okay, do I have a motion to certify the closed session?
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
Just one second, please. The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session being in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, excuse me. Moving on, it's very important, mayor's presentation today, and it's for the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Can we ask Lisa Kersey-Freakin and Naomi Freeland and Naomi Estes to come forward if they're here? Yeah, please come down. And I have the privilege of allowing Councilmember Sabrina Wooton to read it. Come on up to the dais.
Yes, yes, come forward.
Yeah.
Yes, right there, yes. It is my pleasure to read this proclamation. As was mentioned, January is the time where we bring awareness to National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And I just would like to recall about five years ago, when I ran for city council, and I remember talking to people about the platform that I was advocating for. And on the platform was human trafficking, and also homelessness and a few other areas, but specifically human trafficking. As a former Virginia Beach Police Chaplain, I was trained to walk the beat at the oceanfront and look for those signs that are sometimes very hard to detect. And so I know your work, both of you as individuals, and then collectively collaborating together to, to work hard to bring awareness to this issue, which is very challenging, and no, it hasn't been easy. And so I just wanted to take a moment, and this body wanted to take a moment to recognize you for your work, your hard work. And I know that Injul, it's their fifth year anniversary. So five long years and more that you've been working, Naomi, in this field, and you continue to do so. And just wanted to recognize both of you for your hard work and your efforts. So I'll read the proclamation. And it says, "Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern day slavery where people profit from the control and exploitation of others. This includes sex trafficking, forced labor, and domestic servitude. And whereas human trafficking erodes personal dignity and destroys the moral fabric of our society, it is an affront to humanity that tragically reaches all parts of the world, including Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach. People of every age, gender, race, religion, and nationality are devastated by this grave offense. And whereas even through awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas Naomi Estares is a longtime advocate, community leader, against human trafficking, and the organizer of Injul, which stands for equality and justice for every woman, every land. Injul is a nonprofit organization that was created to eradicate human trafficking locally and globally. Naomi collaborates with local leaders to engage the community by providing education regarding possible targets of human trafficking, as well as empowering victims, individuals, and local businesses to work together towards eliminating human trafficking within our community. And I would also like to add, whereas Lisa Kersey works with Freekind, and before that, worked with Virginia Beach Justice Initiative, to work hard to eradicate human trafficking from our community. Whereas during National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we affirm our unwavering commitment to raise awareness of and work to eradicate this horrific injustice. Now therefore, on behalf of Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, to do hereby proclaim, January 16th, today, National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I will come down and bring this to you, and if anyone else would like to change.
On behalf of the board and staff, volunteers, and clients of Freekind, I just want to thank you, leaders of the city of Virginia Beach, for recognizing the importance of human trafficking awareness and prevention, and restoring freedom for survivors. We've been around for about 12 years now, and we continue to raise awareness, do a lot of industry-specific training, have a prevention program that we work to get into the middle schools and high schools, the schools themselves, and to any youth organizations who may be at risk, and also work directly with adult survivors who have been criminalized. What a lot of people don't realize is that so many victims of human trafficking end up being the ones who serve time in jail for crimes that are committed because of their trafficker. And so a lot, a lot of work goes into that. And I just want to thank my team members who are here tonight, and those who could not be here, for the work that they do. The work is not easy, but they all share a passion for this work. And we are just so thrilled to have the support of the leadership, and thank especially Councilwoman Wooton for her care about this issue and her continued advocacy for those of us doing that work, and look forward to continue working with you. Thank you.
Good evening. As Sabrina shared, it is our fifth year, and it's such a heavy subject, matter, a very weighted one, but one we all need to weigh in. Hutch Walkeem, you, I now have a city council partner as a planning commissioner. Michael Berlucci has been wonderful as Rocky has stepped down, so. But one of the things I want to applaud is the firefighters. We had the firefighters very involved, not only for the sister city, for Alonka Pope, but because they are also in the trenches in human trafficking, and educating firefighters, police department, and the sheriff's office. I have Tony here to represent, if she's still here, but Rocky was very a big advocate in making sure that inter-departments within the city are very involved, because it takes all our departments in the city to get involved. With our newest creation of programs for education, our high school, and now newly created one with the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, and really advocating, the average age is nine to 11 years old. Imagine, nine to 11. So we've got to get ahead of this curve. We've got to get in front of the younger folks to get involved and to get educated, to spread awareness. In one educational program, we had a student stand up and said they felt that, for the first time, they were in a safe space to be able to say, "I have been trafficked," in our Virginia Beach public school systems. So we do need to have the awareness, we need to have it more out there. But I do want to say that it can't happen without all of us coming together. And of course, I applaud my Injul board who's present here, as well as our Injul ambassadors. Newly coming aboard, Jennifer Rouse is coming as our ambassador, because she sees also the work that is very important. But it's for both boys and girls, men and women, that need to get involved. And I thank you for being there with us. Thank you for this proclamation. It means a lot for our organization, but also shows that you guys support and advocate for the work we're doing. Thank you.
And thank you for making our city a great city.
Mayor Dyer. Mayor Dyer?
Yeah, please, Chris.
I just wanted to say thank you, Lisa and Naomi. Before, prior to running for city council, I was involved in our family's small business, and we were able to partner with Survivor Ventures to bring some of those trafficked individuals into employment. So for those small business owners out there, there are ways that you can participate by employing in these organizations, because once they get the criminal record, it's very difficult to get a job. So continue to do the great, great work. And for the small business owners out there, please reach out, because they need employment, they have families to take care of, and they were some of the hardest-working individuals we had at our company. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Okay, moving on, we have a public hearing, acquisition agreement or condemnation for Centerville, term pick phase two.
There are no speakers, sir.
No speakers? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, but before, I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on any single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject the item is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker must, will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that have been signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion in the court. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for us to strive for civility and respect. Are there any one-item speakers?
Yes, sir. For J2 Craig Hansen? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, that's being pulled now, so, no, sir, there are no one-item speakers.
Okay, at this point, can we do the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinances and resolutions, number one, is the ordinance to authorize a 20-foot, 3,216 square feet utility easement across a portion of the city's Lake Gaston Pipeline to Greenville County Water and Sewer Authority, and declare such easement to be in excess of the city's needs. Number three is the ordinance to extend the date to satisfy the conditions for a closing approximately 21,961 square feet portion of former Princess Anne Road adjacent to 2040 Nemo Church Lane. Number five is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $125,092 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to the FY 2023-24 Human Services Operating Budget, raise substance abuse prevention and treatment programs. Number six is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $116,558 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to the FY 2023-24 Human Services Operating Budget, raise Step Virginia Initiative. for Step Virginia Initiative. Number seven is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $46,300 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 2023-24 Human Services Operating Budget for community corrections and pre-trial services.
Okay, open a public hearing on planning?
Number one is Matthew A. Gollbeck and James T. Cromwell Esquires, receiver for Shore Realty Corporation, a defunct corporation for a street closure for a portion of an unimproved lane adjacent to the rear of 7502 and 7504 Atlantic Avenue, District 6. Number two, Russia Batista Vicinity Holdings LLC for change of zoning from O2 Office District to B2 Community Business District, and a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 3396 Holland Road, and that's District 10. Number three is Jamila Barnes Executive Cove LLC for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 5608 Virginia Beach Boulevard, Suite 505, District 4. And number four is Tiffany Liuang Shambord Commons LLC for a conditional use permit tattoo parlor at 332 North Great Neck Road, Suites 103 and 104, and that's in District 6. Move for approval.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? The vote is open.
One second, please. The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, we're back to item two, a resolution to dissolve the investigative review panel.
We have one speaker, Craig Hansen.
Okay. Okay, welcome.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me. One second. The IRP panel I'm here to speak on, ironically, at 5:00 in the morning, I was printing off this information, because it's relative to me and my matters, and I'm a great example to the city of why the IRP or the ICRB panel are imperative, are important to not only the city, but citizens and employees of the city. If I'm correct, the IRP panel was the original panel. And then, I'm not for certain, but I think City Council member Wooton, you created the ICRB or collective. But I just remember you speaking about it for three years approximately. And so, the IRP panel, most people will never, I pray, most people will never have an opportunity to have to go through. I still pray that I have an opportunity, because I have not had that opportunity. I've spoken to this council, other members of the council, about my matters stemming from something in the water in 2019. And that incident involved law enforcement working off-duty as a private security. So, when the city holds private, when the city holds private, public, collective functions, things can go awry, out of control. That normally, if it was just a public function, y'all would have control. If it was a private function, they would have control. But when there's an intermingling and something happens, it gets out of control. As a citizen, that's what these boards are basically about. They're citizens to review matters that involve law enforcement. It's another path to go. And this city has used that path against me. I have, I met with Mayor Bobby Dyer, and for example, how I'm an example, I met with maybe Mayor Bobby Dyer on October 3 of 2019, after my matter. That's when he was the first person to tell me I had PTSD and that I needed to recover, tolling, statute of limitations. October 15, 2019, the council spoke in informal. John Moss spoke about me and my disability in your all-closed session. The news also notified me of that, speaking about my mobility letter for my mobility devices in 2018, tolling. The city's aware of my disabilities prior to something in the water and after. And so, these boards are important, because without it, then you all have used it against me, for example. And I'm stuck. I'm permanently entitled, disabled, have not been able to work in 10 years. I have serious injuries that you all cannot see. And your wrist management, even in a letter right after something in the water, asked me for proof of my disability from something in the water. And there it is, my ADA wristband and my VIP and my mobility device. And I provided all that, and they cited state code 15.2209, which is right here, which is, however, if the claimant was under a disability, the time of action accrued, the tolling provisions shall apply. And so, that's all I've been, you know, if it wasn't for this, I wouldn't be in your face, talking to you all for four years now. And if it wasn't for the fact that I was, the reason why I never got this process, it's quite simple.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
There was a mass shooting, and then COVID happened. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Okay.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Motion?
First of all, I wanted to know, is anybody here from the IRP? Would you come forward so we can thank you for your service? So, while you're coming down, I'm going to go ahead and put a motion on the table to approve the resolution, but so.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Jennifer?
I just want to make sure the public understands what's happening, because I did get a few questions about this resolution. So, this is not to dissolve the current work of the Independent Citizens Review Board. This group that's in front of us now participated in the former version that is now being disbanded, so that the current version, the work, can continue. So, this resolution doesn't mean that we will no longer have an independent citizens review board. It means we're dissolving the former version of it, and then the new version will continue. So, just for a point of clarity.
That's an actual important clarification. Anybody else? Okay, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the resolution.
So, I was hoping that y'all would be able to come be with us today, because you've put in many, many long hours serving your city. And we want you to know how much we appreciate all that you have done. And would you mind telling the public all of your names? I mean, I know Susan. Susan is past chair.
Thank you. As the current chair of the investigative review panel, my name is Susan Mayo, and I have served since 2013. My term of service has been renewed. And I'd like to introduce Cliff, Barbara Booker Williams, and Bill Hurst. And Barbara has been the co-chair, serving with me. Cliff joined us a couple of years ago. And Bill, you've been on since?
From the beginning.
From the very beginning. And I have to thank these individuals and several others that are not here tonight for their dedication to the objective that was set forth for us, their diligence in reviewing cases, and the time that they've spent as volunteers. It has been our pleasure to support the city, and we look forward to having the new board continue with their independent review board. Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. The mayor's on his way down. But while he's coming, I mean, I know that there's been many, many long hours that's been put into your work, and what a valuable service you have given to this city. And we just are really are very grateful, city, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And I failed to mention Cliff's last name. He's Cliff Rice, and Cliff previously served on the Human Rights Commission as well.
You want to mention some of the other members who couldn't be here?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to mention some of the other members who couldn't be here?
Candace was our newest member, and then the other member, I'm drawing a blank on the name, our other panelist. Bill.
Oh, Bob from the real estate.
I apologize. It's Bob. He's with the Lindsay Real Estate Company, but I can't remember his last name. Beasley, thank you.
Bob Beasley, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. We're very proud of these certificates. And just one final comment. I'd like to also thank the city staff who worked with us to, their service, and their guidance was invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. The mayor's getting his steps sent for today.
All righty, here we go. Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Rice, Rouse, please, thank you so much for your explanation. It was very, very good. Okay, moving on to number four, resolution to direct the city manager to undertake the economic impact study and infrastructure cost analysis for the Virginia Beach Sports and Convention District, hence known as the district, and provide further direction on the land use that includes the district a capstone proposal.
And this includes the alternate with Councilman Remick's name?
Yes. Okay. Okay, any discussion at this point?
I guess we need a motion in order to discuss.
Yeah, let's put the motion in. Worth?
Thank you, Mayor, and I move for approval of the motion.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion at this point? Barbara?
I just have some questions to clarify, because I think we've had three or four different versions of this. The way I'm reading this, because there are two different resolves, the economic impact study and the infrastructure cost analysis will be for the capstone proposal? And so, together, that's going to cost $75,000. $25,000 for the estimated cost and, you know, for the impact, economic impact study, and it will only be for the capstone project specifically. And then, $50,000 will be for the cost of the infrastructure for the capstone project.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, Councilmember Henley, it'll be roughly around 25 for the economic impact studies and about $50,000 for the rough order magnitude of the infrastructure costs. So, $75,000 altogether for the impact studies and the infrastructure costs.
And that's just specifically for the capstone project?
I think that's written. That's correct, Councilmember Henley.
I just don't ever remember us doing a study of a proposed project. And then, after the study, then the public will have some input.
So, after the studies, the public would have input on that project, but council is also with that authorizing staff to start doing a market, a corridor study of that area to include the resort area and also the visitor center and MOCA as well.
Well, that's what I was concerned about, because then that seems to be a separate resolved. And so, that study is going to be of the corridor generally, not this project.
The land would overlap as well, so it'll be of that whole entire area. It's similar to what council approved in its focus action plan. It's just giving direction to staff to move forward with that.
Well, I'm just confused. I don't ever remember us doing a $75,000 study of any proposed project. But I just wish it were all a part of the land use study, but it appears that they're separate.
Councilmember Henley, that's correct.
Anybody else? Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And I'm going to take a little bit of time. I have a lot of comments and questions and some concerns. I can't go without acknowledging that yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Many of us did participate in activities honoring his life. And so, I'll start with a quote from Dr. King from 331, 1968. "On some positions cowardice asks the question, 'Is it expedient?'" "And then expedience comes along and asks the question, 'Is it politic?'" "Vanity asks the question, 'Is it popular?'" "Conscience asks the question, 'Is it right?'" "There comes a time when one must take the position that is neither safe, nor politic, nor popular, but he must do it because conscience tells him it is right." Mr. Manager, you just mentioned the focus action plan. And the question I've been asked as it relates to this resolution is, "How did we get here?" As Councilwoman Henley just indicated, she's, still has some confusion. And so, I want to be very clear, because in the focus action plan, if you haven't seen this to the general public, please request it or go online. This is the developed council district identities. And on page six, we adopted this as a body. We were given the IAP2's public participation spectrum. And I'm going to read the spectrum for the public, because the first commitment we made was to inform the public. Public participation goal, number one, is to inform, to provide the public with balanced and objective information to assist them in understanding the problems, alternatives, opportunities, and/or solutions. Promise to the public, from this body, we will keep you informed. The second piece was to consult, to obtain public feedback on analysis, alternatives, and/or decisions. Promise to the public, we will keep you informed, listen to, and acknowledge concerns and aspirations, and provide feedback on how public input influenced the decision. We will seek your feedback on drafts and proposals. The third piece is to involve, to work directly with the public throughout the process to ensure that public concerns and aspirations are consistently understood and considered. The promise we made to the public, we will work with you to ensure that your concerns and aspirations are directly reflected in the alternatives developed and provide feedback on how public influence, input influenced the decisions. Collaborate was the goal, to partner with the public in each aspect of the decision, including development of alternatives and identification of the preferred solution. Promise to the public, we will work together with you to formulate solutions and incorporate your advice and recommendations into the decisions to the maximum extent possible. And lastly, is to empower, to place the final decision-making in the hands of the public through their elected official. Promise to the public, we will implement what you decide. The question that's asked over and over the past few months was, "How did we get here?" I requested an update on the proposal that Capstone had presented to the previous city council towards the end of January of last year. We have economic development here that can confirm that. The new council members that had been elected had not seen any information related to the proposal, to the RFI, or the project. But there were whispers in the community, and as a liaison to RAC, I was hearing information, yet I had not seen any information. I reached out to Taylor Adams, former Economic Development Director, and confirmed, along with the support of Councilman Worth Remick, that Mr. Jenkins would be in town on or about the last week of February. Unfortunately, he had to cancel. In an email on February 21, I contacted Mr. Adams and said, "When will we have an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Jenkins?" It was confirmed that Mr. Jenkins would be in town on March 1 for an RFI discussion that would take place at the Office of Economic Development, and a sheet was passed around, a sign-in sheet, to all that had an interest in participating. Councilmember Remick, representatives from MEB, representatives from Economic Development, a pastor. a pastor, Norm, were present at the meeting. We were presented with a booklet that we were told we could not share or take outside of that meeting, so we didn't. Then comes March 2023. We promised to inform. The city council as a whole was briefed in closed session, and there was a desire, a direction given to the manager to bring in Mr. Jenkins and Capstone for a presentation. The manager scheduled the presentation for April 11th, 2023. On April 9th, as Mr. Jenkins was returning from a golf trip to Augusta, he was called and told that he was no longer needed to come in town for the presentation. There was an article written in the Virginia Pilot, and I appreciate Mayor Dyer's willingness to be accountable. He took accountability for the decision. 411, 2023, Stacy Parker. I quote the RAC chair from the article, "How did we get here? Just the fact that they're having him brief council is an indication that there's something moving forward." That's a quote from the RAC chair. Another quote, "It doesn't have to be done without looking at what the master plan says should be there." I want the public to remember that quote. "It doesn't have to be done without looking at what the master plans say should be there." That would indicate that there was a plan. And the plan was the RACAP plan that the previous body, we discussed today, I heard that we have to have integrity on this body, that previous councils' decisions are important. There was a RACAP plan adopted 6/2, 2020. And it was through 2030. That's the plan that was referenced. Billy Allman, a RAC member in the same article, is quoted. "I hope we can take a minute and kind of drop back and plan this area." Mayor Dyer was quoted as saying, "A strategic delay will produce a better result." Again, Mayor Dyer took responsibility on 412 for canning the briefing. It's important that, as we're informing the public, that the public understands when the city council as a body gives direction to the manager, in this form of government, there is no veto power. Mayor Dyer said he acted judicially and didn't want to poison the well, end quote. "A master plan is needed for 19th Street corridor. It should address immediate parking challenges, and a request for ideas from developers may be reissued after the master plan is completed," end quote. My first concern is that this will be the seventh study done in 19 years. All concluded, all of these studies, the previous six have concluded, the convention center needs a headquarters hotel, and I quote, "a bigger mixed-use project." Please, citizens, go and read the RACAP plan that was adopted by the previous body. In 2018, there was an independent market study paid for by the City of Virginia Beach, came to the same conclusion. As an elected official, this is my opinion. This is a delay tactic as it was in April, and it's being strategically done to deter the capstone proposal. If you need further evidence that some stakeholders' voices are louder than others, we received an email Monday to the city council by a developer named Bruce Thompson, applauding the city for slowing down, quote, "and looking deeper into the economic impact and economic feasibility of the existing proposal," end quote. He copied the RAC chair that was quoted in the April article and John Zirkle, president of VBHA Hotel Association. This quote I found very interesting coming from Mr. Thompson. "With the dramatically decreasing average income of our visitors and less and loss of aggressive marketing and sales for convention and tourist activity, is it not time to pause and do a Disney-type planning session and land use study before approving any new projects?" Interesting. Where we started was a strategic delay due to stakeholders, and here we are today, being, implementing, or being asked to vote on a land use study that we've done, corridor study, multifamily displacement study, apartment study. And my question for this body and the previous is why didn't we take Mr. Thompson's advice before committing to Atlantic Park that is over $75 million over budget? Two parking garages and an event space. Why wouldn't we, as Councilwoman Henley just said, she's never seen us spend this type of money for a study? Well, maybe we should have done an infrastructure study before blowing through $75 million due to infrastructure overruns for two parking garages and an event space. My vote is no tonight for this study. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And before I request, you know, other people, I'd like to directly, you know, address Mr. Taylor's concerns. Yes, I did request a strategic delay, and I'll be glad to explain why. When I became mayor in 2018, I was asked by Taylor Adams, our head of economic development, to meet a gentleman from out of town. His name was Norman Jenkins, and we met. And he said to me, he said, Bobby, he goes, "I never really wanted to do business in this town because I considered it a closed shop, but I think things can be different." And I said, "I really do believe if somebody has a proposal that could benefit the city, they should be heard." And he was from out of town, and he was a respected developer. And it took a couple of years, and he did come up, and he did respond to an RFI. And we allowed him to come in and present his vision. Now granted, his vision was what he is capable of doing. He's proved it before in many cities, but he basically gave us a very broad brush. He gave us a piece of clay, and it was up to us as a council, as a management, and with the people to form into what we need. We scheduled the meeting, and I said this a couple of times before, in April. But at the time, we were anticipating the Atlantic Park project would come, be closed, come to fruition, and then we could move on. But at the last minute, there was another significant ask that was made by Atlantic Park that actually kept the project going, you know, and final resolution until we went to, you know, a resolution on the budget. And the concerning thing here is that due to the property transfer, a supermajority was going to be required, you know, to make the deal go forward. So, you know, I floated the option that, and I did consult, to go to Mr. Jenkins with this, that, you know, given the high threshold, it would be better to delay and then have, you know, come in at a better economic climate. Now, Mr. Jenkins came in with a tremendous proposal, and I encouraged him. Him and I have spoken frequently over time, and I invited him to talk to other stakeholders at the oceanfront. And he pretty much called everybody I suggested. He's open to ideas. He's open to suggestions. But once again, I'm gonna use a term, this is a project of magnitude. And once again, the concern was that, you know, for the last, you know, Mr. Taylor's right. This is like the seventh study, but nothing has happened. And basically, we have a convention center that is losing $2 million a year for 20 years. Now, that is kind of, you know, quasi-acceptable in a lot of areas with, when you consider the hotel rooms and everything, but we could do better. And I honestly believe that. And this was my focus group of one also. You know, for three decades, the dome site and Rudy Loop sat. And, but once again, we finally got to the point right now when we're doing that. And, you know, the one thing, at least this action took, we have provoked a conversation on what to do. Now we have a proposal that we could weigh the positives and negatives going forward. And I've been involved in many projects when I was in, a councilman in the Centerville District back then. And I put in some ambitious, dense projects with the consent of the public. And I never had an application fail in 14 years. When there was proposal for the arena, myself and then Vice Mayor Wood, we weren't, no, we weren't even, you know, elected to mayor, vice mayor. We conducted public hearings, and we put side by side, you know, two arena projects, and we brought the, you know, the public to the table, and they gave us the direction. With Atlantic Park, it's my understanding that there were over 60-plus civic engagements. So the thing is, we really don't do projects without, you know, letting folks come to the table. What we're doing that now is giving a plan for evaluation and to find out our costs, our impacts. And here's the deal, we are going into a budget cycle that's going to be very, very challenging. We have to know what we are able and to do not. And then we have several other projects that are in the, you know, the, at the oceanfront that are with the, where are they? 17th Street and everything, but they're in the Form-based code area and everything. So we do have a plan for what's going on out there. But, you know, we're gonna have the Moca coming up. We got a lot of stuff coming up. We gotta figure out where it sits and what it's important. So, but once again, what we're just asking for now is the ability to figure out what the true and actual costs are gonna be, what the ramifications are gonna be, what the displacements costs are gonna be, and, you know, and all the other factors. And then, okay, public, this is what we have. What do you think? And, you know, once again, you know, we have a property, we've been, gone through this. This is the seventh study. Let's take it to action. And there's a point I want to make, and, you know, the council has heard this a number of times from me. We are at the point now where we have to start thinking about creating brand-new revenue streams if we're going to fulfill our vision of our future. The referendum money for stormwater went up significantly. It's over $1 billion now. You know, we think about school modernization and replacement over the next 10 years. That could be in the billions. When we think about our aging infrastructure, that's gonna be in the billions. How are you gonna pay for it? Let's bring in what we need to do what we must do. If we're gonna bring in the Amazons and the other companies, and with the broadband cable and the cables coming in, you know, we're gonna hopefully have jobs that keep our people here. And we're gonna need to wrestle with the, you know, you know, the elephant in the phone booth on affordable housing for our people. So once again, I respectfully submit by coming up with a, you know, a big submission to think about and work off of. And then all of a sudden, we do a study to figure out how we can take this piece of clay and mold it into what we need. Atlantic Park started way out here, but then with reality, it ended up here. So once again, I think this is a tremendous opportunity, you know, that we have to take this city to the next level. Anybody else at this point? Worth, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and as co-lays on to the RAC commission with Councilman Taylor, as well as the Capstone presentation with Councilman Taylor, I'd like to speak to a couple of items. This is District Six, which is my district, but I'll submit to everyone, this is really city property for all of us to look at. And so I do think we owe Mr. Jenkins and Capstone a response to his proposal. We should have done this probably last fall. We're not perfect. That being said, we've never, I don't believe in my, my experience or knowledge that this council is not approved of a project like this without having studied, without knowing what, what is needed in this area for hotel rooms or residential or retail. It does have a displacement potential. The public has been emailing and contacting and texting and calling me about where's the study? What's the need for this? And yes, RACAP does speak to this in a master plan from a 50,000-feet. But this is 80 acres publicly and privately owned, as I said earlier this afternoon. 80 acres right near the resort. That is an incredible opportunity for this city to up our game in the resort, up our game for having something cool to happen, to attract visitors, to attract our existing citizens around the city. We need to get this right. The developer, I have spoken with Mr. Jenkins. He's patiently waiting, as he's done for the last few years. We need to take all this into effect. And because it is such a public thing, I do think potentially we should ask for a blue ribbon panel or a task force to meet and to engage the public and us as council to consider all options.
Thank you. Rosemary, and then Barbara.
So, Councilman Remick, are you gonna, Remick, are you gonna be putting together something to ask for a blue ribbon task force for the council to appoint?
Depends on the vote, on this resolution.
Yeah.
If our resolution is approved, then that would, that would come up next time.
Well, I would support that. And what I also wanted to say is, we've been hearing a lot from the public that they wanna, they want more engagement. They, they don't know enough, and when you don't know enough, then you start filling in the blanks and start making stuff up. And so there's been a lot of things out there. So we really need to engage the public, get them involved, find out what they're thinking, what they... We've, we've never done something without the public really being in support and the stakeholders being in support, because if they're not involved, then it's going to fail. And this is a lot more than Capstone, which I think I spoke about last week. Somebody says, okay, it's been seven studies. Well, there are a lot of moving parts. Before, Moca wasn't part of this. Moca was standalone. But now there's all that Moca property. There's the Visitors Center at the end of the expressway, 17th Street. Now there is an amazing stormwater project that's gonna go in there. It's gonna help with the stormwaters. It's gonna create a whole lot more opportunities right there. As Councilman Remick said, there's 80 acres, and that has not taken all of this into effect. And it's not just what Capstone wanted to do or whatever else might come up. I mean, Capstone is one thing, but it could be something else. But to evaluate it, you've gotta have the information. And we really need to know how 17th Street's gonna work out with that. There's a lot of development with 17th Street and the vibe and all these other things that I just mentioned. So hopefully, and we talked about this last week, Mr. Manager, that we've got to include these things. And, and it's more than 50 miles up in the air. It's much down closer to the ground. And we've got to involve the public and our stakeholders, and we have to hear from them. So I think this blue ribbon task force is a great idea, and I'd like to support it.
Okay, Barbara.
Well, I agree with what you all are saying about the need for this encompassing look at things. And things have changed since the last hotel study was done and so forth. And so those things need to be looked at. But maybe I'm just looking at this resolution wrong because the way I read it, we're gonna be doing the study of this design that was given to us as Capstone, and I hope that we're not limiting it to that design. I mean, when it says we're gonna look at the capstone proposal, that says to me, we're gonna look at what he's presented. And I hope, my hope would be that it's open to other things. So when it says it's gonna do the economic study and the cost analysis for the capstone proposal, that says to me, it's gonna be done for what is already proposed. And I hope that's not what it says.
Amelia?
Yes.
And then Worth.
Okay, what I wanted to mention, besides the capstone, at the beginning, if we notice, it was one group, one developer they brought up, even though when it was opened first, it was one developer. But with this whole 80 acres and corridor, I did mention the importance because we do have a historic community in there, C-TAC, so that we would look, bring them to the table as well. And I think we agreed that it would not only be looking at one part, but that whole 80 acres, the Moca, vibe, the impact of the historic C-TAC as well. So this would be a more inclusive study that maybe the other studies we had did not have all of those components. have all of those components.
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me address you, Mrs. Councilwoman Henley. So, on this study, to me, and this is my industry, my background in real estate, we need to define the need right now. So, that comes first. If there's a need, and we justify that with Mr. Jenkins and Capstone's proposal, then we'll have to weigh that as a body. After that, we would then spend, and I was speaking with the city manager about that, that's when we would engage the money to determine the infrastructure costs. And then the master plan has to go along at the same time.
Well, maybe Mr. Duhany can tell me which is going to come first? Spending this $75,000 on this design or looking at the broader picture to see what else might be there as well?
So, from my understanding, what council wants with this resolution is they want a corridor study and they want us to evaluate further the Capstone proposal. The corridor study and the economic impact study could probably happen around the same amount of time. And then we will not spend the infrastructure money unless the economic impact studies for the Capstone project come back and say something positive and council feels comfortable about that.
Well, I really want this to be done right and broader, but I just can't vote to support something that I don't understand. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's open the vote on it.
The vote is open. Go ahead, close it. By a vote of seven to four, you have approved the resolution.
Okay, thank you all very much. And Hutch, we got to get your picture up on the board up there.
We will.
Okay. All right, moving on to ordinance to transfer 25,000 from the general fund for contingencies for the non-department operating budget and authorize the city manager exodus sponsorship agreement with the Urban League of Virginia Beach Incorporated, you know, for the 40th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Awards Breakfast requested by myself, Vice Mayor Wilson, Berlucci, Rose Hammond, and Schulman. Okay, any speakers?
No speakers, sir.
Okay. You know, once again, I'll take, you know, kind of responsibility for this one. A couple of weeks ago, I got a call from Gil Brand from the Urban League. And he said, basically, there was a significant response for the 40th anniversary. They had, they actually set a record there. They had a close to 1,500 people at this thing, and they ran into some difficulty. And I think the important thing that, you know, we kind of realized that he did make the request, you know, before the actual event, you know, we kind of, you know, searched and looked for, you know, what was going on. But, you know, once again, I think, you know, one of the core functions of city and local government is community, you know, support, especially when it comes to community bridge building. So, you know, I brought it forward, you know, for consideration and, you know, once again, I think it turned out to be a very wholly positive community event for many, many people. Okay, at this point, any other comments?
Yes, I would like to mention that this was important. At first, we looked at what the situation is, talking with several council members. And I did request for Mr. Bland to send us some more information. And after looking at the information of what they have done, because it is Urban League of Hampton Roads, that we had a chance bringing this within our city despite their mount to really be that host. And sometimes it's a hard decision, but I tell you, I think it did make a difference in the end with those 1,500, with the speakers, especially Mr. Clint Smith, and all of those seeing us in a lead role. Because too many times, you hear, "Virginia Beach, maybe that's a racist place." But we stepped up the last minute to showcase that we could still host something like that. And several of our council members came and to move forward. Sometimes you have to think about it, and this was the time to do the right thing by the Urban League. And I have an expression that I learned, "It's not what you do for others. Sometimes you give and it comes back to you double from somewhere else." But we really had a lovely time, the speakers and people from several areas across the cities. We had federal congressmen, we had many others there. So, I thought overall, it was worth the while. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Again, I apologize to the public. I have several comments, but we made a goal when we enacted this focused action plan to provide the public with balanced and objective information to assist them in understanding the problem. Clearly, there was a problem here. The alternatives that were options, opportunities, or solutions. And so, I don't have a problem with the breakfast. I just am troubled, because the event was held yesterday at the convention center. Mr. Manager, can you please provide the public that wants to be informed, a timeline of your communications with the Urban League, sir?
Councilmember Taylor, the Urban League reached out to me, I think, a little bit after Christmas and asked for sponsorship of $25,000. And that's the timeline, I think they reached out to me, and the end of December.
And your response to them?
My response to them was the city staff wouldn't be able to give them a sponsorship, because they're getting a discount on the property.
Okay. Did the city provide the Urban League with a room rental, a room rental waiver is the first question? And then the follow-up is, if we did, at what rate?
So, based on their food and beverage target, they would have qualified for a discount on the room. And I think the room rental waiver was about $12,600.
$12,600 real dollars in a discount? Okay. Do we currently, as of, I guess, yesterday, when the event took place, I wasn't able to attend, because I got such late notice, we actually were not given invitations to the event, but I'll talk about that. Do we currently have a sponsorship agreement in place with the Urban League right now?
Councilmember Taylor, we do not.
We do not? Okay. Historically, how much have we provided to the Urban League for this MLK Day breakfast, specifically pre-COVID? Because we know that was a, this is the first event they've had since COVID, so there's no need to ask about post-COVID.
Councilmember Taylor, I think the $5,000 was provided to them from the, from VBDA Economic Development in 2019.
$5,000 pre-COVID. And that year, with the $5,000 sponsorship they received, did they also get a room rental waiver in addition?
Mr. Taylor, they did not have it in Virginia Beach. I think it was a sponsorship outside of the city, so they didn't qualify for a waiver because they didn't have it here in the city.
Okay, thank you. These are all important questions that I wasn't able to ask last week, because we didn't get an email from Mayor Dyer until Wednesday, the 10th, at 3:00 in the afternoon, saying that we were, he was requesting that we sponsorship. And my response was, I didn't even know we were invited to attend, because we hadn't received an invitation formally. And as evidence for the public, again, as a council member, my job, you asked us to inform you, and we made a promise, we will keep you informed. We didn't receive a formal invitation from the Urban League until 5:06 PM from the mayor's legislative aide, and the email wasn't even, we weren't greeted. It just said, "Pass to the council members." And so, sponsorship letters, I just did a quick little search. This is $25,000 for an event that took place yesterday. Sponsorship letters went out as early as September 2023, I confirmed, with some individuals that received it. They sold out the event with over 1,400 tickets at 60, $60 to $800 apiece, depending on which one you chose. And this is interesting. Key sponsors: Dollar Tree, Family Dollar, Dominion, GEICO, Truist, Virginia Natural Gas, EVMS, Cox Communications, Lawson Realty, Smithfield Foods, Bank of America, VB Public Schools, Breeding Companies, Cape Henry Collegiate. If you go to the UL HR's website right now, City of Virginia Beach was not listed as a sponsor. And so, it seems like the event was successful without the additional $25,000 we're being asked to give today. Thank you, Mayor Dyer.
Thank you. Yep, Mrs. Henley.
Well, this has been a topic that I've been talking about for two years now, and that is when the city is asked to give money to organizations. And I am a strong supporter of our nonprofits and all that they do, but I just feel strongly that there has to be a process. And I've been talking about it for a long time, and specifically after last year's budget, when we added a whole slew of things at the last minute that we hadn't even talked about during the budget, I wound up voting against the budget, because we had not come up with a process. The item after this actually has my name on it, because I figured, well, this is finally going to get us talking about this issue and this process. And then, lo and behold, the next day, I find out about this particular request, which I didn't know about until that time. And I did send an email asking for more information, but I didn't get a response. It's not that I'm opposed to the city participating in these things, but I just don't think we, as the people who are supposed to be monitoring the expenditures of our tax money, can just hand out money without any information. And this particular one has no information about the background or anything else. We do have a way of dealing with these requests, and it's through the COG, the particular grant, community organization grants, that anybody like Urban League should apply to them for money. They have a process, and I think they're doing this twice a year now. And apparently, they've never done this before and didn't know about it maybe, or something. And then, of course, there's the Arts and Humanities Commission, which oversees the cultural request. And it's just that I feel like we have to have a process that everybody follows. If we are going to be responsible for the expenditure of tax money, that's the least that I think we should be doing. And I value our nonprofits, I mentioned this in the session before, in our afternoon session. I feel like it's sort of like having a public-private partnership with our nonprofits, because by helping them in certain ways, and sometimes we're just a facilitator, sometimes we do make a financial contribution. But we are expanding on the services that our citizens can get because of the work of these nonprofits, which they are able to do so much more than we could ever do without them. And I think one of the best accolades Virginia Beach has ever gotten is being designated as the most caring city a couple of years ago, because we do have all of these organizations that do so much throughout the city for so many different things. I hear of new organizations that I'd never heard of all the time. And I think we definitely should be able to find ways to help, like I say, in various facilitating ways, sometimes by making a financial contribution. And when we do that, we just ask them to follow the process. And that's all I'm asking. I'm not being a, saying that we should never do this, but certainly following a process. And I'm just, when I did look at the presentation here, our transmittal letter just gives us no background about this particular request. And it's very hard to say yes when we have no background at all, and particularly when I had asked for more information and didn't even get a response. I do have another way of looking at the one following this, because there's a whole lot of information there. And I just am saying, please, don't bring these to us unless they have been vetted and we have the information. It's just the right thing to do, to let all of us have the background and not put any of us in this position of sitting here with no information, but handing out tax dollars. I just have a problem there.
Okay. And if I can just, you know, conclude with a clarification. Yes, it was a last-minute ask. And yes, we did have to, you know, search around for a pot, you know, to come in. And, you know, once again, there were ramifications. But, and, but the thing is, where this thing is codified, and I agree with Barbara, we have to come up with a better way, because so many of the organizations that we rely on to extend themselves out into the community are really feeling the effects of inflation as we are. And the thing is, the decision to bring this forward actually came at our agenda meeting. And, you know, once again, we found out that, you know, council members wouldn't be able to go because of, you know, the rule of three and everything. And then we found out we weren't considered a sponsor. But by doing this, we were considered a sponsor. But the point is, even though we didn't make it up on the logo sheet, the emcee of the event announced right from the beginning, this is being sponsored by the City of Virginia Beach. And I think that is really critical in, you know, in the hearts and minds of the 1,500 people that were there, that knew that we were, in fact, a sponsor, where as, you know, a couple of weeks ago, you know, we were kicking in around, because we recognized the problems, you know, that were there, about the last-minute ask. But once again, I think, you know, part of the essential role of local government is, you know, the ability to take each thing on individually and, you know, come to the best answer. But once again, you know, let's do strive to improve the process, but, you know, in this case, you know, I think it was a worthy investment. Yes, Mr. Berlucci?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would just like to take a moment to speak about the topic of process, because we've been, as Councilmember Henley noted, we have been talking about it for a couple of years. And processes have been part of this body's traditions and customs for decades before that. But I do want to be very transparent and open with the public when I share that the objections to funding participation or to entering into partnerships with nonprofit organizations, which as Mrs. Henley noted, is essential to life in our community, it is an extension of vital services that in some cases, the city government can't or shouldn't provide. Our partnerships with nonprofits is what makes Virginia Beach a very special and distinguished and caring city. But make no mistake about it, my fellow neighbors and friends and citizens of our great city, the city has been issuing grants for the 60 years that we've been in existence and for long before that, as Princess Anne County. The city has been entering into public-private partnerships and supporting nonprofit organizations from its inception. Only when, as you see and reflected in the most diverse council the city has ever seen or experienced, with increased participation from people from different walks of life, from different backgrounds, from people who are members of and see and participate organizations that have previously not been able or not known how to participate, do the questions about process come to the surface. I point no fingers at any specific person, but we should never allow process to exclude participation. We should never use process to object to participation in the full benefits and scope of citizenship to any group or group of people. So, as we discuss process, and I'm not here to talk about the specifics of the Urban League or the discussion that's coming next, but in these discussions about process, I want to emphasize the importance of full want to emphasize the importance of full and complete and fair participation for all. Process is often used to exclude, and I'm not, I would not make any assertions or allegations that that's the intent of the discussions about process, but it is the effect. And until we can identify and establish and adopt a process that is fair and that it allows equal participation, it is incumbent upon this body to be responsive to the needs of our community and the full scope and breadth and depth of our community. Every single person in Virginia Beach should have a fair and equal chance to participate in partnership with our city government. And I fear, Mr. Mayor, that these discussions about process, whether they're intentional or otherwise, exclude that full participation, and it concerns me greatly.
Thank you. Yes, Barbara.
I know that you're probably speaking to me because I've been bringing this up, but I think that there's a way to do this that doesn't accuse people of these kinds of things. And it just has to do with our fiduciary responsibility. And we do have what has been working very well for many years, and we just need to make sure that we are allowing the time and the ability to answer our questions so that we can then answer questions of the public. And I do kind of have a problem with specifically asking for more information and not getting it. And so I hope that we will have an opportunity to talk these things through and find out where the problems are so that we can make these things right.
Thank you. All right, Chris.
Mayor Dyer, it's a long shot, but just to be clear, this has nothing to do with the event that happened yesterday, because the event already happened. In the first meeting of last year, the second meeting, I don't know if you recall, Mayor Dyer, I brought up the fact that the City of Virginia Beach did nothing for MLK. We depended on the Urban League.
And I relied, I saw your email to that effect, and that did weigh into my decision.
So would a substitute motion, would you accept to provide the $25,000 for next year's event?
No.
You can't do that? Okay, thank you.
Unless you find us, no, a second. Okay, how about at this? Can we open the vote at this point?
Mayor, we don't have a motion yet. We need a motion.
Okay, do we have, we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a second. Yeah, Sabrina.
Could I just say, because this is leading up to my, I guess, point where I'm going to abstain from this vote, but I just want to say that in terms of this event, I certainly was invited to the event some time ago. I did see the indication or information from the mayor about what was going on on another level. But I did attend the event. However, I purchased my own ticket, certainly because of the concern with taxpayer dollars. So I purchased my own ticket, but I also do have to abstain from this particular vote because I do have financial dealings with one of the financial institutions that's listed in disclosures, and it is on file. So thank you.
We have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay, any other can talk? Okay, vote is open.
Ms. Henley, are you abstaining?
I do. I abstained because I just was not comfortable with the direction this discussion has taken, and I just cannot vote.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to one with two abstentions, this ordinance has been approved.
Okay, thank you. And our final item for tonight is an ordinance. Okay, planning item. Ordinance to transfer $150,000 from the General Fund Reserve for contingencies to the Department of Cultural Affairs and authorize a grant to Virginia Beach Musical Theater Incorporated Ray Support at Productions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any comment? Yep, Chris, and then Amelia, and then Rosemary.
Mrs. Henley, were you first?
No, I'll be last.
Okay. All right. I believe we have members of the board from VMT. If, I don't know, Mayor Dyer, if they can come up. We had exchanged some emails, because I had a few questions that weren't answered. If you don't mind, would they be able to come to the podium? Or at least the executive director, Mr. Melnick?
Okay. Somebody, what's a spokesperson from the group come forward? Welcome, George.
Thank you, Mr. Melnick.
I'm the president of the board. I'm not the executive director.
President, sorry, sir. And I appreciate you being here. Your email indicated you were traveling, so I appreciate you pausing those plans.
No problem. This is important to us.
Again, this goes to the process. It has really very little to do with your organization, so I want to be clear. But Councilmember Lucci just really did a great job explaining what the process is. And the process we currently have is get to six votes. That's the process. On August 21st of last year, we received an email from you, and it was encouraging the city council to support the arts. It was an invitation to all of us to come see a show, and I took advantage. I brought my family out to the Little Mermaid, so if there's no conflict. Me and the boys left halfway through because they had a play date, but my wife did stay with the baby and enjoyed it. During the few emails that we exchanged over the course of two or three weeks, there was no mention of any imminent financial concerns or shortfall. And so when I saw this request come in, I just went back through my emails. I wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, because you all have been around for a long time. And so, again, I want to be as respectful as possible, because you all do great work and have been doing strong work. And Ms. Martha, thank you for the email. I was a little confused because it came from VB Vision, but I didn't realize you were also a board member on the VMT. But Mr. Manager, can you, just as we try to inform the public, how much did the city council provide to VMT in this current budget?
Councilmember Taylor, I'm going to speak, and then I'll ask Emily to clean up if I'm incorrect. I don't think council provided them a direct grant. I think they may have received a grant from the Arts and Humanities Commission to $100,000. So they received a $100,000 grant from the Arts and Humanities Commission, Councilmember.
Is that correct, Mr. Melnick?
That's correct. Might be a little bit less.
A little bit less?
It was 100.
100?
Yeah, 100.
Okay. For, maybe, and this may, maybe Emily, can you share the proper process for an organization such as VMT to receive this type of funding? The request for today, not the 100 that you're, that we already earmarked.
Welcome.
Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm Emily LeBeauz. I'm the Director of Cultural Affairs. I understand the question. I believe this is very similar to the other requests that you receive from organizations outside the annual Arts and Humanities Commission cycle.
Okay, so there's not really a defined process?
No, not with Arts and Humanities Commission, no. We provide all of the funding to the groups, so we don't have any additional money to provide as supplemental grants throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. And George, we're going to, I have some questions, but I'm trying to make sure I get this right. Mr. Manager, when did VMT send you the formal request for the $150,000 we're getting ready to vote on?
Councilmember Taylor, I got the letter on January 10th, but prior to that, before Christmas, one of the board members met with me to explain some issues as it relates to financial costs due to inflation, that it won't be able to finish out the year. So I asked him to prepare a letter for me to share with city council.
Okay. And at that time, Mr. Manager, you had shared that, you articulated that because they had received the Arts and Humanities grant, that according to our norms around the city, they were not eligible for another grant. Is that true?
Councilmember Taylor, from a staff standpoint, that's what I articulated to them, that anything else beyond that would have to take council action.
Okay. And again, this, we came to the show very supportive, but our vote tonight could open up the door for other organizations that have received a similar grant through Emily that may come upon financial trouble. And they would have, they would be told, if they reach out to staff, that if you receive one grant, you're not eligible for another. So I just had, I didn't have that understanding, and I didn't have an opportunity, because this email request came in on the 10th at 3:11 PM. And so I have serious concerns, not with VMT, but with the body and really how there's such a lack of process. And I spoke with the vice mayor, and we talked about this, and I gave her a heads-up that I would be talking about our conversation. On December 14th, Vice Mayor, we had a 14-minute conversation. And you and I talked about a lot of requests coming in, and you said that we're going to look at all of them collectively. And that's what I took, that we were going to do as we approached the budget season. So I was a little surprised when this one came in, because you had mentioned it during that call. And now we were being asked and being put in a position that we would have to make this very public vote, and I didn't have a lot of information. And so again, I apologize to the public for our promise to keep you informed tonight. It's going to take a little while, but Mr. Melnick, how many council members, and Martha's emailed to me, she indicated that you guys got in a time crunch, but prior to Christmas, I guess after Thanksgiving, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, that you all had begun reaching out to council members. And I want to make sure I get this right. How many, you were able to reach out to some concerning the request and your current financial position? Are you aware of how many of my colleagues you were able to meet with? Because I didn't, I didn't get so lucky.
I believe that we met with 10 of the 11.
So I was the only one you didn't meet with? Wow, okay, that's helpful.
Or spoke to, not met with. We spoke to everyone.
Okay. And I didn't, I went back through email, I checked my phone, so I'm sorry I didn't get an opportunity, because now I'm put in this very public situation where I have to ask these questions, because I didn't have a chance in December. So you spoke with 10 of them. What date?
Can, can I?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, we did not start speaking to anybody till probably mid-December, and then the holidays hit. So we really didn't start meeting with anybody till after the first of the year.
Okay. And we've sat together a couple of times, so I, no one brought it up in comments, or, so this was all new when I received this email. So you have an idea of where I'm coming from. This just took me off. It just caught me off guard, because I thought you guys were doing pretty well. What date did you send the formal request to the city manager for this $150,000?
The 10th of January.
So last Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. And how much, how much financial assistance did you request from the Virginia Beach School Board? Or have you requested for this particular financial concern?
From the school board?
Yes, sir.
To the best of my knowledge, zero.
Okay. And the reason I ask that question is Ms. Martha was very responsive. Thank you, Ms. McLeese, in sending me information that I didn't have, because I wasn't privy to the conversations you have with my council members, and no one brought it up, that I wasn't aware that there was approximately 1,200 season ticket holders, 72% of Virginia Beach residents, and they represent all segments of the city. And so that was my concern, is we promised to inform, consult, involve, was this, this wasn't just town center, this wasn't just the District Four rep, the District Nine, this was the city. And I read in the letter I didn't receive from the Governor's School of Arts that was dated 12/20. It said, "The Governor's School of Arts serves students from eight school divisions with largest population coming from VB. The funding will directly benefit high school students in Hampton Roads." And they wrote that letter on your behalf to help us, encourage us to really support you. And I wasn't aware of that, aware of that. And so the reason I asked you if you had spoken to the school board is if my math serves me correctly, if we took an alternative path, which you have the support tonight based on the cosponsors, but we could have looked at an alternative path, which is what we promised we would try to do for the citizens. If each of those school division gave you guys $18,750, you guys would easily be able to raise that $150,000. And we do have a funding formula where we share with the schools, so there is an impact to schools.
Very familiar with that.
It just, congratulations. We just don't seem to have a norm of asking them to help us carry this weight that impacts so many students. 2023 ticket sales for the four shows are roughly $456,000. I'm not going to ask you to go through them, but the Little, the Secret Garden, Little Mermaid, Catch Me If You Can, and Patsy Cline. So pretty, the numbers I saw from the report that was attached to Ms. Martha's email was roughly $450,000 in revenue for those four events. Is that close?
Sure.
Okay. The expense for those four events was roughly $150,000, so you're not operating on bad margins, it's just a little tight. And so what popped out to me was that there was a $246,750 shortfall being projected for FY 2425. Is that close, sort of accurate? I took it straight from the email.
Close, yes.
Close, okay. And so in Ms. Martha being so responsive, I had asked for several documents that I would have asked for in December, had I had an opportunity to be included in that 10. I asked for the July through November 23 P and L, and then you guys sent over year over year. And so I want to walk through that, really for the public, because if we're going to support you tonight, which I think you, again, have plenty of support here, it's important that we see that there are some challenges, and there really needs to be a long-term solution outside of this $150 tonight. And so as I reviewed the P and Ls, it looks like your fundraising was up $25,000 for those five months, so congratulations, that means y'all are working pretty hard. Total contributions were actually down $14,000. So you're kind of going out the door, pounding the pavement, but then still trying to retain some of the other contributions. Your corporate business contributions were down $21,000. That's corporate sponsorships, is that accurate?
That's correct. Close, yes.
Government contributions were up $6,500. So the 100, we must have only given 94.5 last time, so that's a plus. Total fundraising was down $14,891. So for me, even with the $150 tonight, there clearly is a concern with maybe the market and the economy and people's willingness to give to you all. Total ticket sales were down $40,640. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain to the public, what does SNG sales mean? It was in the P and L. SNG, maybe the gentleman's coming to assist. SNG sales, and I had a note here to explain that for the, for the public.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mark Hudgens. I'm the executive director. That's single sales.
Single ticket.
And it's hard to look, our fiscal year is July, it's just like yours in the city, July through May. So two of the shows you mentioned were last season. We have two shows that have already run, two that haven't run yet. What we're finding is inflation is just killing us. To give you an example, I used to rent cars for our out-of-town actors. I paid $300 a week. It's now 630. The cost of lumber to build a set, twice what it cost. We're just being eaten alive by costs. Our ticket sales are actually up year to year. I think you're looking at two different years. I'm not sure what you're.
Yeah, the information provided was the July to November P and L.
That's just half a year.
Year over year.
That's just half a year.
But that's concerning with the losses I'm seeing just at half a year. So, and I always enjoy seeing you at Wawa, too, for our coffee.
Yeah.
So total income down $24,000, but you had total income of roughly $682,000. Gross profit was down $24,000. So again, as we look at this holistically, our, everyone here loves the arts, we enjoyed the show. The next thing that I was able to do, once I got the information that I requested, was look at the expenses, because you're right, expenses are going up. Mayor Dyer has already indicated, just with our bond referendum, we're up, you know, 400 million. You've got Atlantic Park up, 30, 40 million, everything's up, except for income. Expenses, fundraising expense was up 12,400, so you're, that shows me more effort.
We're trying hard.
Administrator salary up. I find it incredibly impressive that you're able to find someone to work for what they're working for. Total administration expenses were up 12,000. to work for what they're working for. Total administration expenses were up 12,000. Total marketing development up 12,000. Total artist cost up 10,000. Total audition cost up 10,000. Total costume expenses up 18,000. Total artists wages up 48,000. Total director expense down. Total payroll expense up 22,000. Total Sandler Center expense down 45,000. So our partner at the Sandler Center, I'd asked the manager to be prepared to share with us kind of the losses we're taking on there. So they've worked with you because they've cut $45,000 they could have made. Can you explain kind of that partnership and how, how they're able to do that?
They have since day one worked with us to make sure that we can continue to do what we love to do, to bring the best musical theater that we can to the citizens of Virginia Beach.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, it's, it's very expensive to do what we do. Everyone in our shows get paid. Everyone backstage gets paid. It's, it's an expensive endeavor, but it's one that I love and I can't think of doing anything else.
So your total expenses were up over 61,000, which left us, because we're kind of partnered with you, with the NOI of a loss of $86,000. And that's just through November.
Yeah.
And that's, that was tough to swallow. So my last question, because I know I've taken a lot of the public's time tonight. Why did it take three additional weeks from the time you spoke with the, the manager to make the formal request?
I'm, I, that, the process is not something I'm familiar with. But we did have board members who have done this and worked with you all for years. And I followed their lead and I thought that we were timely in getting all the information out.
Again, we were not aware at first that we needed to make a formal request by letter.
Okay.
And so as soon as we were told that, we made that formal request within 24 hours.
Fair. And that goes to Councilmember Lucci's statement that some people just don't know the process and how to engage us. And so after voting for no on the Martin Luther King Day event that took place yesterday, sponsorship, can you just help me understand what is the, the, the solution to this problem of increased expenses, lower income? Because I'm a small business owner. So if my expenses just keep going up and I can't sell enough smoothies, I gotta close the store and I don't have a partnership with the city of Virginia Beach. So what gives me confidence I can go back to my constituents, that many of them in District Eight support the theater and ensure that it won't, we won't be back in the same place next year.
Our biggest challenge is that what we do is a ver, is variable. We don't know how many tickets we're going to sell to a performance. With the costs that are continuing to increase, our shows have, have gone from costing us between 160 to 170,000 a year to now up to 260 to 280,000 dollars a year. So we've taken a look at our current upcoming show. We've made some adjustments to that show. We've gone out to look, seek additional partners that could help us maybe underwrite some of those shows, some that we've had in the past that weren't able to give as much because right now everybody's coming out. I mean, you, you've been talking about it all day. Everybody needs more now. It's getting harder and harder. I'm in a small business myself, so I get it. And I think that the challenge for you, and I don't envy you in the least, is to continue to, to be open to organizations like Virginia Musical Theater and others throughout the city that, that are going to have a need. And you guys have already addressed that. You know it's going to happen. And so all we're asking is that right now we need your assistance. You mentioned earlier, sometimes you gotta do the right thing. This is the right thing. It's the right thing for our community. It's the right thing for the citizens of Virginia Beach. It's, it's one of those things that if we don't provide a vibrant arts community in our city, then the residents are going to go somewhere else. And it's not, it's only, you know, from anywhere in this city, it's maybe a 20-minute, 25-minute drive to downtown Norfolk. And they're going to take their dollars. They're going to go elsewhere. We don't want that to happen. We provide a, a great venue for an, and professional quality musical theater here in the city of Virginia Beach. If you haven't taken advantage of a show, you need to do that because what we do there is amazing. With the little funding that we have and we, we do our best to make sure that the patrons that are season subscribers and those that are coming to see the shows are getting their money's worth. The challenge as well is ticket pricing. We want to make it affordable. And we, we, you know, we internally talk about increasing our cost of tickets for sales. And sometimes, you know, that prevents others from being able to attend the shows. And that's not what we want to do. We want to be able to, to allow people in our city to be able to have the arts and be able to appreciate them. And that's why you're starting to be able to attract some of these great people like Amazon because they want communities where this is important to, to the city. And so, you know, we're here, we're humbled that we have to make the request. But I think from a business perspective, as you were saying, as a small business owner, I think as soon as we realized that, that this was necessary, that we made some hard decisions. We changed our, we changed our season up for next year. And we're humbly coming to ask you for your support so that we can get through this season and provide the performances for those people that have already invested in us so that we can finish out this season. And we're putting in things in, to effect for next year so that we can, we can do what we need to do in order to provide a theater opportunity for everybody in our city. I'm asking you to do the right thing today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Amelia, and then Rosemary and Barbara.
Thanks to both of you for coming up. For an icon in the city. Nancy Krish to come. And our daughter. These are people that have done a lot for the city. Much more than us coming up here can imagine. Like to say a picture is worth a thousand words. These are very proud advocates for the arts. And I'm a music professor and I know what it means when you all go above and beyond to bring stellar performances for our city. I had my little six-year-old go to the Little Mermaid. And that they stopped after the show to take pictures with these young people. You're planting seeds for the next generation. It is not easy to come up before the council asking for this amount, but I know and I've heard how much is done. Even when you got the loan way back, you've paid that off. And you've continued to fundraise four or five people in your group fundraising because it's the right thing to do. Also, you are able to provide this for many underserved population, which means when you have them come, you are getting that money, giving that out despite the situation. And I like, after I met with you all and talked about this, I had to go back and I talked with a few other council people that yes, you will have to adjust, but you want to do right by the people who've already invested in you. You have our Arts and Humanities Emily, who's willing to sit with you. And there are few others who are willing to come up to the plate because they believe in what you're doing. Nobody's perfect. No business is perfect. And it's sad that you are being rigged through the coals tonight about what you've done, what you haven't, what you've lost and so forth. There, but for the grace of God, go I. So I think this is important that we take this stand and do something for our arts because many people who come to our city is because of the arts that we present to them. And at least you're looking at a plan. I know you have much more, but you're asking for one little bit. It may seem a lot to some people, but when you look at 500,000 here, 600,000 there, and the many asks, you're going to what is needed. So there's not something that is a want, but a need to finish off bringing the stellar performances you do. So I stand with you on this. Thank you.
Rosemary and then Barbara.
Beautifully said, Councilwoman Ross Hammond. Y'all are part of what makes Virginia Beach great. Mark, I look at you and think about Bayside High School. And you performed with my brother, Ron Capps. Yes, you remember those. And George, you and I ran for the school board together back in 1996. And of course Nancy and Martha, I mean. But you give because it's in your heart. There's a whole lot of other things that you could be doing. And there, there's a whole lot to be said here. 32 years, okay. 32 years you've been really successful and now you've got a problem. And I really didn't sit down with your folks until a week ago, last Tuesday, right, right before our council meeting. And I sat down with Ms. Henley and, and she and I chatted and we thought, you know, we, we really got to do something. Well, the problem was, and the reason this is so immediate is you have to have this funding by the end of the month. Well, today was our last voting meeting. And if we didn't get together today, it was going to be February and it would have been too late. And after 32 years, you would have had to close your doors and they probably never would open again. And all those people that have subscribed and paid your money, they wouldn't have gotten their money back. This was a critical emergency need. And not only to say you're the largest participant at the Sandler. Do we want the Sandler to go dark for 40 days a year? And those people come to see your performances and they eat in their restaurants and they shop in the stores and they make in an event. And so that adds to our bottom line in a different way. You service our, our students and the public and you've been there for us. Now, I talked to Martha, I said, "This is a one-time only." We've got to, we've got to get this, we've got to get our house in order. And the, the really great news is you've got some people out there who are going to help you. I talked to Emily LeBeauz, who's, gosh, she's one of the greatest people ever was. And she is so fond of you. She says, "We've got to help them." She's, she's, "I will help them." And Emily, if I'm speaking out of turn, let me know. But she says, "I will help them get their house in order so that they can have next year and be able to be in a good place and not be in this situation again." And the real cavalry is coming in is Patty Phillips. Now, all of us that remember Patty Phillips, who was head of our finance department, who is absolutely amazing. Well, she's going to come out of retirement and help you as well. So I know, Chris, you talked about we need a path forward. I think that this, there is one and they're going to get significant help to get them through this. And so planning for next year, because we don't want to see you back here on this. And we, we love you guys and thank you for, for hanging in there. I'm sorry that you're in this situation. I was, I was actually not very happy to find this at the last minute, but, but, but we're here for you and you're here for us. And we're very, very grateful for what you do for our citizens, for our students and for culture in our community. Thank you.
Barbara.
Thank you.
I will try to make it brief because I know we've been here long enough and saying the same things over and over. Y'all are wonderful. But the, the important thing is that y'all are willing to work with the, pardon me, process. And you're willing to do what we require because I think your people on your board realize that we can't just hand out money indiscriminately. We can't give it to just everybody. We have to have the right answers. And I really appreciate that y'all are willing to work with us to see what we would need to do. And I can appreciate what happens in the middle of the year and everything is not the way you thought it was going to be and you've got in that situation. It happens to people all the time. And that's what I think is important, that we know how we are going to accommodate these mid-year requests. And I really appreciate y'all being willing to step up and, and do what we needed to, to be able to do to answer the questions that we rightfully are going to be asked. And I, I think the fact that we've got a lot of data here that you all have pulled together and given us your, your financials and for the past few years, exactly what you did. And you've got the Economic Impact Study that has been done by Economic Development. And I appreciate your letter that you wrote. And I've particularly underlined the sentence that says, "The Board of Directors is actively engaged in ensuring that this is a one-time event." Because now that you know what this inflation is doing, you can better plan for your next year, but you're in the middle of a season. And it's awfully hard to go back and undo. You just can't do it. And so I can appreciate that. And, and I think our, our citizens can and can understand the, the job or the spot you're in. And I, I again say how much I appreciate that you're willing to go through what we ask you to do, that we're going to be, this money is going to be given to you through the Department of Cultural Affairs as an Arts and Humanities grant. And that means that Arts and Humanities will be able to follow up and that there will be the accountability that's required of people who get funding through this process. And that's what we have to be able to answer to people is that yes, we do know how you spent the money. Yes, you did what you were supposed to do and that kind of thing. So this allows the accountability that's so important. And I, I really appreciate your being willing to, to work through it in this way. And that by working with our staff and looking at the situation, that you'll be better able to plan next year's events so you won't get in the same jam again. But I think it's also important that our citizens know this is the first time you've ever had to ask for emergency money. Or I think that's what you think. And I, I can appreciate that, but I can understand emergencies and I can understand things happening that were not predicted and that you have to, to work with. And so I appreciate all this data that you put together for us and I will be able to approve this and wish you well.
Thank you. Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to just take a, just a, a moment to thank you all for being here and to thank the board and all the volunteers and the staff and the entire VMT community for not only your efforts to participate in this discussion, but for the positive impact that you have on the city of Virginia Beach and the people who live here. And the impact goes back 32 years, as noted. I don't think it's been entered into the public record. I'm trying to, please forgive me. I'm trying to get my document pulled up. But I do want to, for the sake, a lot has been entered into the record. But I'd like to share a few facts about Virginia Musical Theater that I think are germane to this conversation and that I would like for the public to know. The first is that, as has been previously noted, you're the only professional performing arts organization that is headquartered and performing exclusively in the city of Virginia Beach. That you've produced high-quality professional theater programming for and with the city of Virginia Beach for 32 years and have never requested emergency financial support. That you're the largest single user of the Sandler Center for the Performing Arts. And that the specifically, the facility was specifically designed to meet the needs of resident arts organizations. And you are a resident arts organization that has existed and performed at Sandler since it opened. Since 2007, you have generated more than $315,000 in facility use fees for the Sandler Center and generated more than half a million dollars in admission tax revenue. That you have approximately 1,200 season ticket holders and 72% of them are Virginia Beach residents. But we know that people who enjoy your performances also come from other parts of the region and that they are widely and evenly dispersed across the zip codes of the city of Virginia Beach. Also that you produce and provide internships and on-the-job training for high school students, including students who are enrolled at the Governor's School for the Arts, but also in arts programs throughout the city of Virginia Beach, starting, I think, at elementary school, all the way through high school and into college and higher education. And many of those interns and performers are now performing on Broadway and in national touring companies. And a letter supporting this request was submitted by the executive director of the Governor's School for the Arts. And I would also just like to, sorry, I'm. also just like to, sorry, I'm, want to pull up this other document. I lost it. But maybe, Mr. Hudgens, could you just tell us briefly about just some of the highlights of some of the alumni from VMT who have gone on to careers at Broadway? I think Adrian Warren is a three-time Tony winner
Correct.
From the Tina Turner
Yes.
Performance, but others as well. Could you just talk about some of the highlights, some of the nationally renowned talent that has come through VMT?
Sure. For the past over 20 years, we have worked with the Governor's School, the Musical Theater Department, with Chip Gallagher, the head of that theater department, in internships with his students, many of which, and there are just, there are dozens and dozens, including Grant Guston, who isn't from Virginia Beach, but he is from Chesapeake. And he was The Flash on television for many, many years, and is making his Broadway debut in March as the lead in the musical Water for Elephants, was in many VMT shows. We've had quite a few do-Broadway careers, movie careers. Our last show, The Secret Garden, starred the last Raoul and Christine from Phantom of the Opera on Broadway. That, of course, has closed now, so we were able to hire them for our last show. The gentleman playing Raoul had played the role for the past 17 years on Broadway and in Vegas, and also on the national tour. So we're very, very proud of our alumni who've been with VMT and gone on and learned some of their craft with us, and gone on to big and better careers. Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Hudgens, for example, I also saw the performance of The Little Mermaid, and I think the performer who played Ursula
Correct. Patrice Covington.
Is a Broadway performer, professional actor.
A former Governor's School student. She was actually a student of mine, and she played, I saw her on Broadway in The Color Purple. And we were lucky enough, because of the writer's strike, that she was available to play Ursula, the sea witch, in The Little Mermaid, and now she's back doing movies.
And the city of Virginia Beach, the citizens of Virginia Beach residents, had a chance to enjoy her performance
Yes.
During this most recent performance of The Little Mermaid, but also, her talent was, in many ways, in part cultivated through the Virginia Musical Theater.
Correct.
Also, could you just talk a little bit about the broad and diverse nature of the cast and the crew and performance? I just think that's really important, because I have a graphic that shows some of your distinguished alumni and many of the people who participate. And I think what it reflects is the broad and complex and wonderful diversity of backgrounds, ages, abilities, that exists within our city that's reflected in not only your audience, but also in your performance and cast. Could you just talk a little bit about that?
Yes. We participated in blind casting. Ursula is just one of the many times that we've hired an African-American actress to play a part that wasn't created for an African-American actress. But there, you know, there's no reason why she couldn't play that part, and she was wonderful. We also, again, even though we use Governor's School students, we don't use them in roles that are age inappropriate. So it's not like we're hiring them to play adults or any characters other than their age group. A lot of people don't realize that it takes a village to put these shows on, and there are generally more people backstage working than there are onstage. We also hire all of our orchestras through the Musicians Union here in Tidewater, many of whom live in the city of Virginia Beach. So there are generally, with any show, there are 60 to 70 people who work on any given project.
Mr. Hudgens, you, it was previously stated that the possibility that VMT could close if not for receipt of this grant that would be directed through the Arts and Humanities Commission, where would those young people, where would those adults, where would those professionals go if VMT were forced to close due to the?
There are other theaters, of course, in the area. The Little Theater of Virginia Beach does an amazing job, but they don't get to work with Broadway talent like they do coming in to see our shows. The Virginia Stage Company is another venue, but they tend to use their students more backstage, because most of their shows do not include roles in their age range.
Thank you.
But so there wouldn't be much opportunity for them outside of school.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm wrapping up my comments, but could you also just briefly touch upon the partnerships that VMT engages in, that provides tickets and theater experiences to groups from underserved communities, from nonprofit organizations?
We have a project called Project Angel that gives groups of people who can't afford tickets, free tickets to our shows, some of those. And we also do a lot of charity work in which we give free tickets for auctions and things to a lot of nonprofit companies like Toby's Dreams, the Red Cross, the Boy Scouts, that sort of thing. We've worked with groups like Beach House. Right now, my mind's drawing a blank, but there have been many organizations that we've given free tickets to through Project Angel.
Well, I would just say in conclusion that I definitely understand and can appreciate the, some of the evaluation that has occurred of your request. And I just want it to be known, if it isn't already, that I'm a strong supporter of the arts and culture in Virginia Beach. And that's really what makes a community strong and connected and interesting and vibrant. Americans for the Arts, which is an arts advocacy organization, will tell you, and you can go to their website and see, that an investment in the arts produces a positive impact on the economic environment for a community. And we know that, because of the numbers that were stated previously, because you're the largest user of the Sandler Center, because the families who attend your performances also go to lunch and to dinner and in town center and surrounding neighborhoods, and those revenues go into meals taxes. And so you're creating activity, you're creating a positive economic impact. But I think most and more importantly than that, the arts and creative expression helps us to understand the human experience. It helps us to understand ourselves, and our neighbors, and our communities in ways that we would not if not for the work that you create for us in our community. It helps us process complex emotions and thoughts that we would have no outlet to process. It helps us understand diverse perspectives and the perspectives of people we don't agree with. It helps us understand history. And you can't put a price on that. You can't measure the economic impact of that. The economic impact is positive of the arts, but the impact on our community of culture is immeasurable. And that's why I think we, as a body, have identified arts and culture as a top priority. And I want to thank you for the work you do. There's one board member here, Ms. Crowley, who has not been recognized, but I also want to note for anyone who has concerns, that she is an experienced bankruptcy attorney with, I mean, we're laughing, but it's true. You need a person with a critical and thoughtful and analytical eye who has, I hope you'll never need her services for any bankruptcy matters, but you do want someone with her skills and background in helping to analyze to avoid such events to occur. And I want to note that she's here, and thank all the board members, and I appreciate the service that you provide to our community and the time. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's open the vote.
Thank you for your consideration.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the ordinance.
Okay, great. Okay, now, planning item number five, Alenia Wesley slash Saw Contracting Inc. for conditional use permit for residential kennel at 5205 Shore Drive.
The applicant, Alena Wesley.
Good evening. Thanks for hugging in.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Alena Wesley, and I would like to speak with you about the kennel license application. On Saturday, January 13th, at 11:31 PM, I said goodbye to my very best friend. So now, as per the conditions that were placed on my application in last month's meeting, it would seem that my request for a conditional use permit is no longer needed. However, before you close my case, I implore you to reconsider. Allow me to have five dogs as a permanent number for my permit for the length of the time that I reside at this property. There are currently 144 dogs available for adoption between the SPCA and the Virginia Animal Care and Adoption Center, and that's not including the Norfolk SPCA, nor does this account for the vast amount of dogs that are available for adoption through the 16 Virginia Beach-based dog rescues, all of which are full, understaffed, and overwhelmed. Here, you have someone that has the financial means to provide for these dogs, the family support to take care of them, the full-time availability to provide for them, the housing, the yard, and space to accommodate proper exercise, the education and training background and veterinarian background. I'm currently enrolled in Penn Foster for veterinarian tech degree for emergency care. But most importantly, I have the support of my community for this license for five dogs. By removing that condition, you allow me to permanently house five dogs. You provide me with the opportunity to continue doing what I love. Lucy, she was a six-year-old black kitty when I got her. She was a Stashire bull terrier, Shar Pei lab mix. She came from a very abusive past in Texas. She was used as a bait dog. Virginia Rescues pulled her off of the euthanasia list, and when she got here, she went through three fosters before I was contacted because of my ability to work with dogs that were reactive. It took me months to get her to be the house pet that she was for the six years that she lived with me. Unfortunately, she had a very fast-acting and aggressive form of throat cancer. We weren't able to help her, and that's why we had to put her down this weekend. Without your support of removing this condition that was placed on my application, I become limited to the help I can provide to the other dogs that are being overlooked in our shelters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, Ms. Wesley, I want to extend my condolences and thoughts for you and the loss of your friend. And I happen to, your home is in District 9, and I did actually watch the Planning Commission hearing that day, and I just, just the other day, had a chance to review the transcript. And just for clarification, I believe, and Ms. Warren, you can correct me if I'm wrong, four dogs are allowed on a property without the need for a conditional use permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And from the Planning Commission hearing, it seemed as though you had requested the fifth dog, because that dog belonged to your, belongs to your mother.
The Malzypoo, yes.
And your mother is currently residing with you. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I know there was some discussion in the Planning Commission hearing about that, and
If she moved out, or if she no longer lived with me, that I'd be at the four dogs. That was under my understanding, that Lucy had more time with me, and that's why this came about.
Understood. And I certainly respect and acknowledge your request, especially considering the change in circumstances. I just, my reservation in supporting the request at this time is because the application before us concerns five dogs, and if one dog were to leave the property, that it would revert back to four, such that the CUP would no longer be needed. So I, my concern is that your neighbors, or if anybody who wanted to come tonight to speak to a change in what the Planning Commission had agreed to, they didn't have an adequate opportunity to be able to do that tonight. So would you be amenable, perhaps, to allowing for an opportunity for proper notice, and for you perhaps to come back here next month, and to allow your neighbors an opportunity to react to this kind of change request?
So yes, I would. In my original application, I didn't have this condition in there. It was placed on there. One of the members asked if I would put it on there. I said I don't want to. However, I'm looking to move into this property. I have five dogs, so yes, I will, because I need to be able to move into the property. When I spoke to my neighbors, they knew that I had five, that that was the intention, that, again, I thought I had more time. They would be five dogs on the property for a long period. I understand what you're saying, and yes, if this condition can be removed and would be revoted on, I would give my neighbors time to have that proper notification.
And I appreciate you understanding that the reason for my asking is just, you know, if somebody were looking at an agenda, they may or may not have made a decision to show up, depending on what the request is. So I just want to afford your neighbors an opportunity. If there are objections, or if there are people who would like to come and support you in your request, that they be afforded an opportunity to do so. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other comment, I would like to move for a deferral of this application for a period of 30 days.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
So that would be February 20th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's open a vote.
By a vote of 11 to 0, this application has been deferred to February 20th.
Okay, if we can go through the appointments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The 90-day Festival Task Force to appoint Carla Hasseltine and Mark Johnson. The Act of Transportation Advisory Committee to appoint Kathleen Beiler. The Clean Community Commission to appoint Victoria Lubinoff, Lubinos. The Deferred Compensation Board to appoint Erin McCoy and Michael Cullen. The Green Ribbon Committee to appoint Councilmember Schulman. The Historic Preservation Commission to appoint Mac Rawls, as representing a Meritist member. Who's this? I'm sorry. I can't. For what? Okay. One second. City Open Space and Library, I mean Advisory Committee, appoint Kathleen Simmons. Personnel Board to appoint Regina Hilliard, and to reappoint Frank Borum and Lenita Hudson. Process Improvement Steering Committee to appoint Bruce Johnson. To the Resort Advisory Commission to appoint Jeremy Maloney. The Transition Area IT, enter Facility Traffic Advisory Committee, John Cromwell, and to reappoint Councilmember Henley. And Phyllis Sawyer. The Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation to appoint Kay Ashby. And Wetlands Board to appoint Barton Dexter. And I need to ask the clerk a question. Gerald Daniels for the 90-day festival, did we get, did we get his?
Did we submit it to Talbot Bank?
He was appointed.
He was already appointed?
What'd she say?
He was already appointed?
Was he already appointed?
He was already appointed, is what Terry's saying.
Well, we'll do, just for good measure, Gerald Daniels. Ms. Henley?
Yes. Mrs. Sawyer talked with me yesterday, and she's asked not to be reappointed to the ITA committee, so we'll
Okay, so if we can remove Ms. Sawyer's name, I move to approve.
Okay, votes open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, any old business? New business? Thank you, and welcome, Hutch.
Yes.
One down.